I think I should be. Oh, there we go. It's, we're a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. Will staff please conduct a roll call? Will staff please conduct a roll call?
Okay, for tonight's meeting, we'll start with Mr. Sylvester, present, and Van den Homburg.
Here.
Work.
Here.
Harrington.
Here.
McReynolds.
Here.
Han.
Here.
For each public hearing, public comments will be accepted during the times as indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members that wish to provide public comments over the phone can call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period. They'll enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting on the board live and will no longer be able to leave a recorded message. Are there any announcements or changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda for tonight. The only announcement I have is that I did get feedback from the city planner on the amendment of the zoning ordinance for the increase in zoning board of appeals membership to seven, and that's going to be on either the December or January planning commission agenda. And then we can go through the, you know, the moving of, of Mr. Sylvester into a regular seat.
Okay. Is that it?
That is it.
Okay. We'll move on to the acceptance of last month's meeting, or minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Can I get a second?
I support that motion.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. I'll now explain our procedure for tonight's public hearing. For each request, the secretary will read the application into the public record. The applicant or representative will have 10 minutes to provide their comments. Following that, the public is invited to step up to the podium, starting with others in favor of the application. Clearly state your name, address, and present your comments within three minutes. Following the comments from those who wish to speak in favor of the request, we'll have those who wish to speak in opposition, and they'll do the same. Next, any calling comments will be aired for the board and the audience. After this, we'll close the public hearing upon the request. Once the public hearing is closed, the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact, where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact of the board. Therefore, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but of the finding of fact. Then the board discusses the request in order to determine the ruling. The board reserves the privilege to ask questions of persons who have already spoken even after their public comment portion is closed. Once the discussion is ended, the board will move, move on to the roll call vote. A full board consists of six members with four votes required to grant a non-use variance or a use variance. Will the board secretary now read the first application?
Sure. Okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of appeals by AVB Inc. The applicant, well, ZBA number 25-10-16 at 209 and 219 West Cedar Street. The applicant is requesting a use variance from chapter 50-4.4C 11B to allow a commercial parking lot on a corner lot on the LW-1 district where a standalone parking lot is not permitted on corners, is not permitted, excuse me, on corner lots in the LW-1 district. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Will the applicant please step up to the podium and explain their request?
Good evening, board members. My name is Kurt Karinlock. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and I think I've had some before. I've worked on a couple of projects. I wanted to use most of my attendance to explain the background and how we got to this application. It's not necessarily a free standing parking lot. It is in context specifically in this application, but if you'd be prepared to share kind of favorite things in play in this project. So I'll start with a little bit of background information. So the project team that we have here is a partnership with the Himmenn Company, and if I have to work for AVB, so I'd sit in with the Himmenn Company at least once a week for a week plan for a lot of different projects, including this larger concept of the work. Both companies are based in Calhoun County. Both companies have actually been cooperating with each other for over 50 years, so projects dating back to 1970. And from a community engagement standpoint, I'll go into that next. I did throw this old article that's been built, you know, from the 50s to 1930s. They were an effort to, when the projects made a big saving on trees, and so the tree actually was safe and still exists today. Engagement wise, so I have a good surveying on numbers with the community. Our organizations are actually deeply engaged as well. I serve on the city council, the DVA, I'm the city council president. I've been for 17 plus years. I also serve on Metro Score and up here at the City's Linking Council, as well as contractor companies. I serve on the airport as well. So we're deeply engaged.
Sorry to interrupt you, Kurt, but your microphone doesn't seem to be picking up. Can you tip it up a little higher? Is it, I don't think so. Is it muted at the chair station?
Hello? Better?
There we go. Okay, sorry.
We're really straining to hear you.
Okay, all right. Better now? Okay, great. Well, thank you. So I was just going through some community engagement work that we try to do as an organization. So we try to be deeply engaged in the community and hope to do that in the future as well. So project experience, we have worked on dozens of projects around Calhoun Zoo County. These four on the screen are all of the AVB-Himmenn partnership. The Trade Center project in Portage, which is a mixed-use office and hotel project, as well as restaurants. We just opened a project called Tall Timbers in Portage. It's 180 units of multifamily housing. And the Spring Hill Suites, a Marriott hotel, and a retail center on Center Avenue in Portage as well. I'll get into the Calhoun Zoo projects next. So a handful of other projects. These are individually by AVB and Himmenn. Forty-plus years ago, the Skyrise development, which is a mix of senior housing and market-rate apartments, was built by the Himmenn Company. They built it. They still own it today, 40-plus years later. Our group was developer of Trader Joe's in the Costco area on Stadium Drive at Ashmore Township, and a mix of local businesses. Naumburgers on here has a representation. We try to do a lot of work with local businesses as well. So how did we get involved in downtown? We started with a study from the, this was from the city. Zimmerman Volk did a study back in 2014 saying that the downtown area needed 1,400 housing units. We took that and said, okay, we haven't done downtown work historically in the past, but if there's a demand for it, we'll go and try to fill that demand as best as possible. We found a site that was the old public safety station. That's on the left-hand side of the screen. Developed plans, which turned into the 400 Rose project, and you can see the construction underway there. Beginning in 2018 was construction, but really started work in 2014 with that study. That result, excuse me, resulted in the 400 Rose mixed-use project. We started with 135 apartments and then did a second building with 101 apartments, added in the factory coffee business on the corner of Rose and Level, and now have really added to, we think, the vibrancy of that area from what was once an area with a lot of surface parking lots on it. So to follow up the project we just finished, the 400 Rose, the second phase project, we reviewed the housing study that Calhoun Zoo County did in 2022. In that study, they called for almost 8,000 units, I think was the total number, of apartments and how, and single-family homes and townhouses and condominiums, a mix of housing types across Calhoun Zoo County, up to 8,000 by the year 2030. So that was 2022. We're here in 2025 now, in the urban center, the downtown area. You can see it highlighted on the screen here. There were 300 in the, in the general urban area, another 250 in the urban center, and another 400 in the urban core. So we took that and said, what can we do next to try to help fill that, that void, since the housing that we had built was already full? So we turned to the corner of Rose and Cedar, the city's former fire station site. We are working diligently with the city right now, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, on a project to add 71 new apartments in a new construction building on that corner of Rose and Cedar. To do that, and just a little bit of context, this is an aerial of the site from the city's GIS map in 2018. You can see before we started any work there, it's really a church, a handful of homes. I know some of the neighbors are here. They did some great work on Cedar Street. We tried to fill in a lot of those surfing, surface parking lots though along the way. This is the same image in 2025. You can see a lot of those surface lots have been filled in with new buildings seven years later. So a little bit of context on what we're doing. How did we get to this idea of a new parking lot on a lot that had been used for construction staging? We have 136 apartments already built. That's in kind of the center of the screen, as well as 101 in the second building. I just shared a concept for 71 new units, Rose and Cedar at the northeast corner. And then we have another site on Burdick Street that runs between Burdick and John. So we are trying to add all this housing in, but in the meantime, trying to shuffle around some of the parking as well, hoping that as time goes on, the demand potentially for, for vehicles maybe diminishes as, as, as different types of cars and transportation come into play within downtown. In the meantime, though, we're having to shuffle parking around to accommodate the growth of new housing. So this specific project, the Star, is the site. There are two parcels, 209 and 200, 209 and 219 West Cedar Street, and they have been used for construction staging. We are proposing a move of two corner parking uses. So we currently own where, at the northeast corner of Rose and Cedar, we currently own those surface parking lots. The city owns one as well that would be incorporated into that bigger project. And we would move that parking off of that primary urban street corner into the middle of the block. We would also take parking that we are renting right now at the southwest corner and move that parking to the middle of the block as well. The middle of the block is unique here because it has an alleyway that runs through it, and the alley, alleyway is what makes it be technically a corner. In most blocks downtown, this would be the middle of the block, which meets the objective of the zoning ordinance. So we think what we're doing is pulling parking off of these primary corners, moving it into the middle of the block for now, and building new housing on one of the primary corners, and hopefully building on this block as well. But need to shuffle that around right now based on timing. So I just listed here a few things related to what we think this variance request will promote. Existing housing viability in the downtown and binary area. So we've got, in spite of, we don't all want to have cars potentially downtown, but there is still a demand. We've got now five-plus years of management experience with downtown apartments. We have a lot of people who don't use their cars every day, don't want to use their cars every day, but still have a car. And so that car still requires some sort of storage in the downtown. So maintaining that viability for the existing housing is one of the reasons we're going to be taking parking offline to build new housing. We need to accommodate that somewhere, at least for the time being. Also propose new housing. I've mentioned that on the Cedar Street corridor. That's directly linked to the ability to do this project. And then removal of surface parking from a primary street corner in the downtown. We're getting off of that corner of Rose and Cedar, moving it into the interior of the block. And, and then finally, just the bigger picture opportunities for future housing. I think as we look at this kind of musical chairs that's being played with parking, we've gone from this massive parking field that's been on that block to really shrinking that down and trying to move it into the smallest possible areas off the primary blocks. So I think that's the end of my 10 minutes. I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions?
Is this for city staff? I do have a question. Is, this question for city staff for, for the developer? Commercial parking lot versus what? What is a commercial parking lot? How is a commercial parking lot defined? And is it distinct than a residential parking lot? Like, what is a commercial parking lot?
Well, it's referred to as a standalone parking lot. Typically, it's called a commercial parking lot because in many cases, spaces are leased out. But there, there wouldn't be any difference, you know, between commercial or residential parking. It's the fact that the, you know, both these properties will be 100% parking lot with no, with no other primary use.
Parking for a fee?
Yeah.
Commercial parking.
Well, just, well, just, but just, it's all parking.
It's all parking.
So like, you think about like, other developments where the primary use is an apartment building on the property, and parking is accessory to that. In this case, it is the primary use, surface parking lot.
Very good. Thank you.
On the corner.
Kurt, I have a question. You said that by moving this parking off of the corner of Cedar and Rose Street and moving it into the block, that would free up that corner property for future development? And that the most likely future development, did I get you that correctly? That you, you, your company thinks that future development would be housing and multifamily housing at that?
Yeah, correct. Let me go back to the more slides. So what we are working on right now is on the screen. So we're looking at a site plan for the northeast corner of Rose and Cedar on the fire station site. And the old answering service building, that's there now.
The answering service building is vacant. The fire station's been vacant for about 21 years. So it is a, it has reached a point where it's now a blighted site, I would call it. So we are working on, not only are we working on it, we have been to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority multiple times, working on a Brownfield plan with them. We are deep into the design phase of the project, and you can see the, the image that's on the screen is what we're, on the right-hand side of the screen is what we're intending to build. Still some work to do on details for final design and finishes. But our goal is that this, this movement, this shuffle of parking accommodates 71 new housing units in the downtown core.
That's not, that's not by Cedar and Rose parking though, is it?
This is.
That is, or no?
This is at the northeast corner of Cedar and Rose. This would be south of the AT&amp;T building. So the giant AT&amp;T concrete building, immediately south of that, fronting on Cedar and Rose.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Does staff have any comments?
Staff has just a few comments. Kurt Artema covered it quite well, but just, just to recap, you know, this site is completely void of any use right now. It was cleared to be used as a construction staging site. So, you know, this request before the board tonight doesn't involve any, you know, demolition of existing houses or anything of that nature. As it was pointed out, it, it does front on West Cedar Street and an alley, but that is a public alley. So technically, the way the ordinance is worded, it's still a corner lot, which, which brought it into the sphere of needing a variance for this standalone parking lot project. And then, you know, I think it was really well laid out, the tie-in with redevelopment and, you know, the, the shifting of parking around and over time, the removal of other surface parking lots that will result from this, you know, this short-term use of this site, which, you know, could become long-term depending on what gets developed next to it. With that, I want to mention, you know, the staff did indicate two conditions that they put with their support for this application. The first was a five-year sunset provision from the date of this board's approval. And the second is the required removal of the parking lot improvements at the end of the five-year period. You know, and, you know, unless a project is built that, you know, that makes this no longer a standalone parking lot. So those, those two conditions are what staff is requesting, and other than that, I don't have any further comments.
Thank you, Pete. I'll now, now open the public hearing and invite those to speak in favor of the project. If there are none, I'll, I'll ask for those that are opposed.
Do I have to reset the clock?
We need your name.
Yeah. I sound good on that. I thought I had like three minutes or something.
You do have three minutes.
Rackley, can you hear me?
Yes.
Please state your name.
I am Eric Stuckey. I live on 317 West Cedar. I also own 313 West Cedar, and those are, other than Roger's Place at Douglas and Sons, those are the only single-family or dwellings on Cedar Street left, and I will be affected by parking lots. Not, I'm not a proponent. Let's see, I scratched out a few notes. But first, want to thank you guys for your time. I've sat in your position, and I know it's kind of a thankless position. So I'll try not to put on some kind of filibuster here. I'll try to, but, so, main points. Parking lots are not aesthetically pleasing. They're not environmentally friendly. They're not multi-use, and they are not efficient use of our downtown space. That being said, I have a good relationship with Kurt. I think they've been doing good things with AVB. And tonight is the first time I've heard sort of the, the bigger plan. What guarantees do you have that this parking lot's going to stay, only be a parking lot for the first five years? Or is it going to become a permanent parking lot, which is not inviting, which is not a friendly space, which not is a good use of space for our community that desperately needs green? Want to add in something else. We're talking about housing, and they are doing some housing projects, but these parking lots currently, there were housing units there where these parking lots are now. So I kind of look at that as, the one on the corner in particular, John Rooney's place, actually was no worse shape than the home I live in now, which is getting to be quite a nice place, in my opinion. So it's like we tear down. The other piece I want to point out about parking lots is, you're going to be charging space, you're going to, private companies making money. We're, we're working on a negative budget. Everybody knows this, right? Why don't we do something as a city to generate income? But I, that ship has sailed. From what I just heard, that's, that decision is no, not possible. Because my first thought was, turn the stinking fire station into a parking lot and we can generate something, right? But that's not the case. But I think we really need green spaces. We really need, as an Airbnb owner, I want things that are inviting to the city. I want things to keep people in the city, walking around places to, parking lots don't do that. Parking lots are basically like Calhoun Zoo was created, what, in the 60s, to come in and get out. I, I don't think it's a good thing. It might be in the big picture in the long run. I don't know.
You're doing good. You're doing good.
But yeah, I mean, those are sort of my points, but again, I'll say I, I like the things that they've done and sort of that. There is some thought. But what I would really like you seriously to consider with any parking lot ever, or any building ever, is thinking environmental impact. We didn't do this on Stadium Drive. They had the thing dug up six feet deep. Do you think they could have had a way to have the runoff go in and water native plants or trees? No. They pushed it all into the gully, which exacerbates our issues of flooding, you know? And this is what I see with a parking lot in particular, which is one of my major issues, is it's going to affect me. It's going to, we already have inadequate storm sewer systems. More flat parking lots without being well thought out don't help that. So I mean, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. You said you had a couple rental properties across the street. How, where do you, where do you, where do they park?
I have private parking on the lot.
On the lot?
Yeah, so. So.
The Airbnb.
That's the other thing I was going to say, is that the development, ABB, I don't know. You guys probably all, everybody in the room actually probably already knows this. They have an entire city block of underground parking between Cedar and Rose. Then there's a private parking on the two developments that they have. And then there's street parking that was added as well on Cedar, which is another reason I'm like, why do we need more parking in front of my homes? You know, but, yeah. Does that, sorry, I kind of got rambling there. Did I answer your question, or?
You did. Any other questions for Mr. Stuckey?
I have a question, Mr. Stuckey. And you're doing a fantastic job. I see where you're coming from, and, or at least I believe I do. To recap, am I hearing you say that you are okay with this as long as after five years, they do build housing?
Something I wanted people to think about, because what's the guarantee that it's not a parking lot for the next 25 or 35 years? Or whatever, you know, I mean, you say temporary. What does temporary mean? I've heard five years, but what is the?
Okay.
I've seen a lot of things get pushed through in the historic commission, as I sat on the board. And it would be, hey, we're going to do this thing, and it sounds really good. And two years later, oh, well, because there's not a deck, or because there's not a this or that, well, we're just going to do this now.
Okay.
But look at history, right? So I think we need to be very conscious, in particular environmentally and aesthetically, because that's what's going to keep our people downtown, and that's what's going to keep our local businesses open.
Okay.
Opinion, right?
Mr. Aldrich, can you add to that about the permanence of that five years? Being built, the clause being built in for the city? That that is a real thing?
Well, yeah, what I can say is if the board chooses to utilize the conditions proposed by staff, that would mean at the end of this five-year period, the parking lot would need to be removed if there was not a primary use. You know, whether there's a retail business on the property that goes with the parking, or on a small apartment building, you know, or it's consolidated in with a bigger development. But if that, if something doesn't happen in five years, then they have to remove the parking lot, is what this condition would lay out. And if it's the condition of the approved variance, then it has to be followed.
How do you remove a parking lot?
How do you remove a parking lot?
Yeah, how do you remove a, it's a parking lot. How do you remove it? You might dig up the.
You dig it up and haul it away. And if the property owner doesn't cooperate, then the city does it, and then leans the property for the amount.
You're left with a gravel lot, is my point. You still have a parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, yes, we would then have to work on another redevelopment plan. But I'm just trying to say that, you know, these conditions are, you know, are real.
Well, and hopefully what they do.
If they're tied with the variance.
Yeah, hopefully what they do comes out in a positive way. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
I have a question, too. So is it, did you have to get, for it to be a construction staging site, did there have to be some kind of permission from the city for it to be utilized for that purpose? Pete?
Well, there was permission given. There had to have been demolition permits for removal of the structures that were there. You know, I can't speak for the economic development staff involved at the time. But it was, you know, it was part of this bigger-picture project to, you know, develop the second phase of the 400 Rose apartment complex. And, you know, and the need for a staging area, you know, to place the construction trailer and some of the equipment. So, you know, that was the trade-off, that, you know, this was a site that worked. And, you know, so that the city issued the demolition permits and, you know, the necessary historic approvals, those also had to be obtained. So, yeah, so it did go, yeah, it did go through the process.
Through that process. And so I think that, well, I guess we should just wait till discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Any call-ins, Pete?
I'm checking right now. I don't see any call-ins. No, there is no call-ins for this particular request.
Thank you. Further discussion from the board.
On what, though? Like, the whole issue?
Yeah.
Okay, we can have a conversation. I have, I guess I'm just not clear about how we're activating temporary uses, like, for these types of purposes. Like, to Mr. Stuckey's point surrounding, like, you know, how do you address the issue of just the environmental degradation surrounding, like, installing a parking lot? So you're going to take that pavement and then remove it and put it in another part of the city? And for what purpose? I, why only five years? Do we need to utilize it for a parking lot space? And just, I don't, I guess I don't understand. I know all the event center stuff that's happening and like, the development of downtown. All of those things are happening. But I guess I just don't understand why five years, we need a parking lot for five years? And how we have historically dealt with the issue, excuse me, of like, temporary use for the purposes of construction, the purposes of development? Like, why? And what is the guidance from city staff on, like, what role temporary parking, a commercial parking lot would play on the, on, like, the future of the city? I know that was 27 things.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But you know me, so.
So, yes, yes. So ultimately, the city would like to see a higher, more use-intensive activity on this property. And that is why the five-year condition is being proposed, so that it doesn't become a permanent parking lot going forward, that it does get redeveloped or absorbed by a development, you know, that occurs adjacent to it. But, you know, that something occurs to create, you know, more dense development and not just another surface parking lot that everybody drives by and that's there, you know, from this point forward. And we do have a number of those. For those that can remember, the Wendy's that used to be downtown, you know, that reverted into a surface parking lot. And that's, you know, that's unfortunate that we, you know, have that right along East Michigan Avenue on a prominent corner. But, you know, but those things happen. So that is where we're trying to be, trying to bridge the gap and find the balance to allow this to be used in a more flexible manner over the next five years while this additional development project that ABB and Hinman is working on comes together. You know, but after that, we would like to see something happen with this surface parking lot. So that's where the five years comes from.
Do we have the ability, since it's a temporary use, and our, the constituents have, including many people on the board, have issues with, again, the issue of the environmental degradation? Can we, since it's just a temporary use for five years, like, say, what type of parking lot? What kind of material can be used at the, for the construction of the parking lot? Can this board, does this board have the purview to say what type of material can be used to construct this parking lot?
I mean, the board has the ability to place a variety of conditions on a variance, which could include matters of how a development comes together. However, that's really not, you know, that's really best left to the site plan review committee. I can tell you that, you know, because of our stormwater management requirements, that this site will not be allowed to, you know, discharge into the city storm sewer. There may be an overflow connection for big, you know, rain events. But there'll have to be, you know, a storm, you know, storm system on-site, which most likely, under the parking lot.
Who's the accountability, who's going to be accountable to that?
Who's accountable to?
Who's accountable to ensure that whatever type of parking lot they install? I don't know. Is it install the word? Is it install, install?
So it would be, no, I got you. So it would be the, it would be the site plan review committee that would review and approve the actual site plan. And that site plan has got to include, you know, everything from what's being proposed above ground to what's being done underground with stormwater management. And so that's all on this approved plan. And then the city staff is charged with making sure that as that development occurs, that it complies with the approved plan. So that's where the, that's where the monitoring and follow-through come in.
But we, this board still can say we want a specific type of, we can say what type of, because I could just ask ChatGPT right now, what's an environmentally friendly type of parking lot to construct?
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Can we do that?
My hesitation is that the public services department has, they have stormwater performance standards based on the number of parking spaces that are proposed. There's stormwater requirements that come into play. So like, if this board were to say, we're going to approve this with pervious asphalt, for example, that might go against the stormwater performance standards. And, you know, that would, I wouldn't want that to happen. I'd rather leave it up to the site plan review committee to, you know, address those materials requirements and stormwater requirements, if that makes sense. I feel like we're going to end up conflicting with other city regulations by trying to guess.
Chairman, if I may add to Pete's comments. I mean, what Pete is saying is that there are specific ordinances governing how this is designed and constructed. And being as specific as they are, legally, those override the general authority of this board to impose conditions in a variance request. Now, you can impose conditions regarding zoning to ensure protection of the zoning order. But as far as construction, that is to be handled under the site plan review and public service requirements and building and code requirements and so forth. But there are certainly protections built into those, how that is constructed, and what is required, the type of service and drainage and stormwater runoff and so forth.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments?
I do have a question that may have come up in the presentation, and I missed it. And again, I mean, we're a zoning board, and we're here to talk about a use variance, a zoning question. And as I understand it, this is, this proposal is to move a parking lot in order to facilitate other development on vacant property, in order to relocate other surface parking lots, consolidate them, and facilitate new development. Did we hear how many units are going to be developed in the proposal?
Yes, it was 71 units.
71 units?
What's proposed.
Okay. And so, two houses were demolished to create this staging site. And the staging site.
One, one was demolished.
So one house was demolished in order to create this construction staging site. And then these parking lots are being moved to reuse this construction staging site for a five-year period. And then when that five-year period expires, that conforming use expires, right? That no longer would be a conforming use.
Correct.
At the end of that five years, if we accept the staff proposal of a term on that. So I just want to remind myself of really what we're talking about here, facilitating development of housing in the city of Kalamazoo, in a city that, as I understand it, needs thousands of units of housing developed in the city of Kalamazoo.
Thank you, Ellen.
I mean, yeah, but there's still a way that you can do that, because we still have to do that within the context of, like, taking care of the environment. And to Mr. Stuckey's point, like, to construct a parking lot and then for a temporary use, if there is not an accompanying building that's added to support housing or whatever else, or whatever other developments are happening downtown, we still have to deal with the issue of a parking lot being constructed in the center of downtown and the environmental degradation, again, like I've already mentioned. And so I always feel like in these conversations surrounding this, like, I'm coming against something that, it just, I'm not coming against the development, but I feel like the approach to these things are just so, they're done. They're not, they don't take all of the things into consideration, and the constituent voice is regularly silenced in the conversation. And I think that there's other ways that we can be brainstorming this. And I think we can be creative about how to do these things to honor everyone's desire. And sadly, I just, like I said, like, I just don't know how to do that. I wish that more voices could be in the conversation surrounding how we could think more along the lines of regenerative development. And I wish we could speak more to that, more regularly, and just more frequently. I would appreciate that personally.
But with all due respect, we're a zoning board. And there is an environmental concerns committee of the city of Kalamazoo. And that's where such matters are reviewed.
Yeah, and before they can even come, like, get that.
There's a site review process.
They have to come to us.
We are a zoning board, and we're here to review matters of zoning law.
Okay, I know what to do. No problem.
Any other comments?
I have a couple. So at the end of the five years, okay, first, am I interpreting it correctly that it's really likely and hopeful that another development happens on this parking lot within five years? Like, is that the purpose of this five-year extension, as you understand it, Pete?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
It is likely, and we're hopeful.
Okay, so like.
There will not be the creation of a parking lot and then the removal.
Have it removed. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. But also, let's say, all kinds of economic challenges take place in the next five years, and we can't, they can't do the development as they are hoping and planning to. Could they apply for another use variance at that time?
Could they return to the board to ask for modification of the condition? I suppose they could. I'll let Attorney Bear speak to that, though.
Yes, I believe they could.
So worst-case, one worst-case scenario would be that they cannot, if they couldn't develop it in the timeframe that we have right now, they could ask for that instead of removing the parking lot materials as it states right now.
Right, if they filed a variance request, that would suspend any action enforcing that timeframe until that was considered. However, this board, whoever the members of the board are at that time, would be able to review that and have the discretion whether to brand or extend a new variance or not.
Okay, thanks, yeah. I just wanted to find out if, like, if we, if the new board felt like removal of the parking lot was irresponsible, that could be addressed.
And it could be. And of course, as any variance decision that's taken, depending on the facts and circumstances at the time. Depended on the facts and circumstances at the time, and we don't know what those are going to be five years from now.
Okay.
Set it. Okay. Ellen, can I get a finding of fact? Thank you.
I move that the finding of facts for two oh nine and two nineteen West Cedar Street shall include all the information in the notice of public hearing dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and the agenda packet staff, and the agenda packet that staff provided for this request. Sixty-three notices of public hearing were sent, and one response was received. And that response was in correspondence in support of the application. A public hearing was held before the board, and public comments were accepted. Some additional documents and voice messages were received. The board members received copies of the application, together with layout sketch, site aerial photographs of the current parking lot and the proposed parking lot, as well as a diagram of the subject and surrounding properties. Kurt Artema with American Village Builders gave, appeared to speak in support of the application and give background regarding the application received. He discussed the applicants, that he gave background as to the application applicant companies and the um and the history of developing four hundred Rose Apartments. The uh, the applicant uh discussed the proposal to use the uh the subject property as a standalone parking lot, which would allow relocation of nearby surface parking lots, including parking on the corner of Cedar and Rose Street, which is considered an urban core or uh an urban core street. The the special circumstances which caused them to request this use variance are that this parking would be directly across the street from the four hundred Rose Apartments, which would serve, be served by this parking. Another special circumstance had to do with this property being on being bifurcated by a an alleyway, which causes it to be considered a corner location. And so that triggers the need for this use variance. Again, the relocation of the parking lot off the Rose Street corner would make a would make one or several building lots available for future multifamily development. The applicant stated that this does not negatively impact the public, and it meets the spirit of the ordinance, because it would benefit the public by moving this parking off an urban center street, and again, making this this area develop available for future development. Granting this variance, but and therefore, by granting this this variance, it would be in support of appropriate downtown development. Now, speaking in opposition to this application was, and forgive me if I get your name wrong, Eric Eric Steckedy?
Stuckey.
Stuckey, spoke in opposition to this application. He resides at three thirteen West Cedar Street, and he is opposed to this and other surface parking lots. He considers them an inefficient use of the space, and he has concerns that this would become a permanent parking lot rather than a limited-term parking lot. He feels that we need more green space in Kalamazoo and in downtown Kalamazoo, and he has concerns about environmental and other drainage concerns. Staff inserted the comments regarding a proposed five-year condition for this use as a parking lot, and that at the conclusion of this five-year term, the parking lot and the improvements for it to be a parking lot would be removed. I believe that concludes my finding of fact.
Very good. Thank you, Ellen. Can I get a second?
Uh, second that motion for finding of the facts.
Thank you. So can I get a motion in a second regarding the pending request?
I motion to approve the pending request.
Thank you. Second?
I will second that. Um, and I and I'm a, but I I second that wondering if your motion includes the staff recommendation for the short term.
Yes.
With that clarification, yes, I support your motion.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Pete, will you take a roll call?
And this will be a roll call vote for the use variance with both conditions the staff mentioned earlier in the staff report. We'll start with Han.
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
No.
Work?
Yes.
Vanden Hamburg?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Congratulations. Yes. Remy, will you read the the next application?
Absolutely. All right. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning Board of Appeals by um CD Arena LLC, CBA number twenty-five dash ten dash seventeen at forty, four eleven West Kalamazoo Avenue. The applicant is requesting the following for the parking deck. Number one, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point five to allow the total square footage of wall signs to exceed the maximum allowance of signage on an individual wall or building elevation. This variance is for the electronic message display EMD, um which is a wall sign on the east side of the parking deck. Number two, a dimensional variance from fifth chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point five to allow wall signs that exceed the maximum size allowed per wall sign of two hundred square feet. This is for the EMD on, Shelby, can I say the acronym? EMD, or do you want me to say it, say it all out? Is it okay? Okay.
Acronym should be fine.
The acronym's fine, okay. On the east side of the parking deck, number deck. Number three, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point three G one A to allow EMD wall signs that exceed the twenty-five percent maximum allowance of wall sign area that can be comprised of changeable copy or EMD square footage. This is for the EMD on the east side of the parking deck. Number four, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point three G one A and B to allow for a full motion video on the EMD located on the east side of the parking deck. The applicant is also requesting the following for the event center. Number one, a dim. Is this the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
You're good.
Number one, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point five to allow the total square footage of wall signs to exceed the maximum allowance of signage on an individual wall or building elevation. This variance is for the wall signs on the west side of the event center, of the event center. Number two, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point five to allow wall signs that exceed the maximum size allowed per wall sign of two hundred square feet. This includes the two electronic message displays, EMD, on the north side of the event center, along with three large static signs on the event center. Number three, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, fifty dash nine point three G one A to allow EMD wall signs that exceed the twenty-five percent maximum allowance of wall sign area that can be comprised of changeable copy, of changeable copy or EMD square footage. This is for the EMDs on the north side of the event center. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the ordinance.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Will the applicant please step forward?
Is it on? Okay. Um, my name is Kendra Daniel, and I'm with Tower Pinkster, and we're here to present on the variance request for the Kalamazoo Event Center. Let me get this bigger for you. Or maybe not. We'll go with it. We're requesting, as you read, several variances across the entire building. Um, a little background, this is a unique building opportunity, and thus, the signage strategy for it is unique and falls outside of what the zoning allows. And so we hope to present to you the things that we found that in good faith meet the zoning requirements for this special use case building. To familiarize you with, what is currently being built just north of here is a multi-use event center. There's um, the ice sheet here is a practice and community ice rink. There are basketball courts for the WMU basketball men and women. The arena is a multi-use sport facility where there will be hockey, basketball, and concerts. And then a multi-use event hall, which is a flat four space, which allows for any number of different trade shows or events to be hosted. Um, and then to the south is a parking deck constructed along with the event center to support the influx of people coming to use the event center. Um, to give you a preview of the whole package of the signs, we have some illustrative images. Just to give you an idea of these signs in scope of the building, since a lot of them by zoning are large, but they fall within a pleasing arrangement on the building. So we can dive into the specific signs that we're requesting. I'm gonna start with the parking deck, which is at the south. So Pete, let me know you have these in a blown-up version, so they're a little easier to read. We've color-coded and numbered them to make it easier to understand all the signs that are on the building, not just those that are, that we're requesting variances for, because there are several on the building that fall within the zoning, but they do contribute to the whole look, feel, and desired effect. The first on the parking deck is um the EMD sign. It is an integrated LED sign into a glass wall. It does turn the corner of the building, so as you can see, on the north face of the nine-story parking deck, there will be an additional piece of the screen, but as it, it does not face the right-of-way, it doesn't fall within um the CBA. For this sign, we're not only requesting a size variance, but also an uh the EMD percentage increase. Are we talking to the video one right now?
Yes, yeah, it would be the the all four sign variances related to this particular screen.
So in addition, there has been a request for full motion video minus sound. So just videos being able to play on this screen in addition to movable copy and static imagery. On. Now, it's not gonna let me go to the next page. On the north face of the event center, which is the main entry, the large event center sign is being requested, it is over the zoning requirements, and we're requesting a variance for size. Currently, the content is unknown, but what we have is a sign size and square footage that we will not deviate from. Anything that is proposed in the future will fall within the sign size that we have requested. Um, in addition, on this facade outside of the zoning, we have signage for the box office and a digital marquee that will have changeable copy that runs around the corner of the building. On the east facades, we have the continuation of that marquee. All signs on this facade fall within zoning. And then on um, on the north facade is where we have additional signs that fall outside of the sizing, so they're too large, and we have additional EMD displays that, again, fall outside of the twenty-five percentage allowable. These, however, we are not requesting a video variance. They would only have static imagery. Um, and they would follow all guidelines laid out in the zoning code. In our final facade, we have one sign outside of um zoning size. It is the Spirit logo mark for WMU as the only sign on this side of the building, and as a prominent feature coming into town, we think it'll give the event center a true identity once the two-way conversion happens on East Kalamazoo. We can just imagine it being this moment of arrival to the event center coming from um West Main. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Staff comments?
I already asked Pete my questions, so I'm good.
Yeah, so I I'll just kind of pick up where where Kendra left off, and you've already, the the background has been covered quite well for these two prominent structures with the eight-story parking deck and the rather large four-story event center structure. So I want to um start by talking about, you know, what is permitted on this site. You know, there's, in addition to wall signs, there's also an allowance for freestanding signs. However, for this development, there is no free. That are planned at this point. It is, all the signage is going to be on the building. Obviously, in many cases, the building comes really close to the property lines, so there really isn't room for those freestanding signs. But I just wanted to point that out, that there is other signage that is not being exercised by the development team for this project. You know, and with that being said, um, the other aspect of this is that there are certain signs that are exempt from the sign regulations, the ones that are between the buildings. So the ones on the event center that face directly towards the parking deck, and what's on the parking deck that faces directly north towards the event center structure are not, are not uh visible or legible or designed to be, you know, clearly viewed from the public streets. So we're not talking about those tonight. And then also, what's shown in yellow, just looking at this, the diagram that I I blew up, you know, from the plans provided, that is where the marquee is, where there'd be scrolling information, and that is permitted under the ordinance to have a marquee. And so the size of what's proposed there for the marquee uh does fall within the the ordinance guidelines. So, you know, that's, this color-coded layout is is very helpful to see, you know, where the the EMDs are located, where the the static uh wall signs are shown in red, um, and then, of course, the the marquee in in yellow. So with with, you know, with that being said, um, you know, there's, like I said, there's there's signage, you know, freestanding signage not being utilized. As far as getting into the specifics, Ms. Harrington did a great job of reading off the uh the variances. Obviously, you heard a repeating theme. Obviously, you heard a repeating theme because there are similar variances needed for the signs on the parking, signage for the parking deck as well as the event center. So that, that, if we focus specifically on the parking deck, it's really this one sign, which is the, the EMD that faces at North Park Street, that these four variances apply to. And, you know, the first one is, you know, the, the wall sign allowance in the ordinance is determined by, you know, the overall width of the wall that the signage is attached to, or in the case of a building that's five stories or more, it's 5% of that wall space determines the, the maximum square footage of, of all the wall signs that can go on that wall. So this is obviously over that 5%, which is, what did I calculate in here? 492 square feet would be the total amount allowed and this EMD is 1,921 square feet. So, you know, so that is the, the first variance. And I just wanted to comment, which, which I know I've kind of repeated a few things, but it is a multi-use board. Not only will it advertise the Western sports teams, be used for concerts and other trade shows that may come to the event center, but it'll also serve as a, you know, as a useful tool for community events being held in the plaza that is directly, directly east of where that screen is going to be, you know, facing towards Park Street there. So it, it is, you know, it's, it's a multi-use board that they're putting up. It is unique technology where when it's not turned on, you can actually see the structure of the building behind the panel. So it's not like this is going to be a big white screen that's, when it's not in use, that's all you're looking at. So that is, you know, that is also a, you know, you know, something different to keep in mind. The second variance is from the maximum size of a wall sign. Now, in this zone district, the maximum size of any one wall sign is 200 square feet. So therefore, we, you know, this, this EMD is, is beyond that. And then the third variance is related to the allowance for a changeable copy board or EMD as part of a wall sign, which is limited to 25% in normal cases. In this case, since the, the whole sign itself is an EMD, we're at 100%, not 25%. So that's the third variance. And, you know, the only thing that's close to that, the Wings Event Center has a very large freestanding sign that, that faces towards I-94. I looked at that and that is, the overall sign is like at 1,029 square feet. So it's, it's quite large. It's not as big, but that facility is not as big as this facility either. So, you know, just in comparison. And number four was for the full motion video use of the EMD. And as the board read, there was a number of guidelines that the development team put in place as far as what would be followed for the use of that full motion video. And what the planning staff would ask is that the board condition the approval for that fourth variance on those, on, on following those guidelines that have been laid out within the agenda packet. So with that being said, I'll just move through the event center signage. Is there, is there any questions, questions about the parking deck first?
I'm doing the finding of fact and I actually feel really good about everything, but the, for one of the points, I've got the electronic message display facing North Park Street. One, I've got the requirements for that. The allowance for changeable copy at 100%. Full motion video EMD and you've got, we've got some restrictions or qualifiers with that. But then for number two, I just have EMD and I was...
And for, for number two, that was exceeding the, the 200 square foot maximum for a single wall sign?
Okay, all right, thank you. Exceeding the 200 square foot, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions related to the EMD on the parking deck? Yeah, I know this is, I don't want to blend the two together, so it's probably a stopping point.
This is all the parking deck, got it?
Okay. As far as the event center, which was, was also covered in detail, this, you know, when you're looking at that layout, the variances are only needed on the east, north, and west sides of the building. So, you know, that is, is that right? East, north, and west sides? Well, and the, that would be the south side too because that's where the event center, yeah, yeah, that's where the, that's where the event center channel letters are going to be located. So it would be all, all four sides.
100 square feet. Can you repeat that? The east side does not have a sign.
The east side does not, so it's, it's...
North, south, and west.
Okay, so it is three sides, three of the four sides. Okay, thank you.
Of the event center.
So the first request we're talking about is the overall sign area exceeding the maximum allowed for, you know, a particular wall or elevation of the building. And that is only applicable to the west side of the building. That's where the large Bronco logo is going to be. And, and, and the channel letters that say Western Michigan University under it. So that, you know, so the, you know, that is the only side that exceeds the overall sign square footage allowance. Number two is, again, that same dimensional variance allowing for wall signs that exceed the maximum size of 200 square feet for any individual wall sign. And that comes into play for one sign on the west side and three signs on the north side, and then one sign on the south side. And if you want me to go through which signs those are, we, we can do that. If you follow the numbers in the, the sign layout, you can, you know, you can look that up. Like, for example, you have number four and number seven on the west side. And then on page two, number four is the Bronco WMU Spirit logo and number seven is the Western Michigan University channel letters. So, you know, you, you could walk through that if you have a question about like which sign is, is being referenced that's over that 200 square foot allowance. And then the third variance related specifically to the event center wall signage is the, the EMD signs that are going to be on Kalamazoo Avenue, one facing east and one facing west. The allowance in the ordinance is 25% of the sign area. And obviously, these are, each individual sign is 100% electronic message display. So, you know, that is, you know, that, that's it in a nutshell. And I'm open to any questions the board has. And staff is supporting this due to the unique use of, you know, multi-function uses of this building as well as the size of this building. You know, just as an example, the, the, you know, from corner to corner on Kalamazoo Avenue, the building is 567 feet in length. And then along Park Street, it's 423 feet in length. This overall site is over eight acres, I believe. So, I mean, scale-wise, it is, you know, it is a, you know, large facility when you look at the eight-story parking deck and then the 426,000 square foot event center. So I think that's all I've got for staff comments. Is there any questions specifically about the event center signs since we kind of paused for the parking deck?
The building's definitely not, we didn't have a building like that, that size when we made the, the ordinances, the zoning ordinances.
No, we didn't. We, we definitely did not. And I did take a moment to look back. We have a number of large buildings in the downtown, not of this particular shape, but even like the, what was the example I had? The, the fifth third building, for example, on, on Michigan Avenue. The wall sign up on the, on the front of that building is, is, you know, 600 square feet just under that. The Comerica signs on the, on the rooftop of that building are almost 400 square feet. So, you know, there are examples around town of, you know, of larger buildings, you know, getting approval to have signs over that 200 square foot allowance.
Okay. Any questions for Pete?
I think it's going to be cute, okay? I know I've thought about the bike parking spaces, but I'm fine, okay? I'm, I'm coming to the, I like it, okay? It's going to be cute, it really is.
Yeah, great. We'll now open the public hearing, hearing to invite those to speak in favor. If there are none, we will look at opposed. And, oh, there's one.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Matt Conley. I'm the owner of 137 North Park Street.
Excuse me, said Matt Conley?
Yes, Matt Conley.
Sorry.
I was hoping we'd be able to leave that site plan back up so I could kind of point to where...
All right, and Matt, what building did you say you own or you live in or?
137 North Park Street.
137 North Park, okay, thank you.
That's great. So the building is located just, just north of the Federal Court Building. So it's a two and a half story, commercial use, split level law office attorney building. And then the very top level is a, it's a residential loft apartment that has windows that face east and west. So the only concern that I have is the, the EMD, which I kept hearing the word, or the letters EMD and all I can think of is earnest money deposit. So that's what was in my head the whole time. In my world, it means something different, so learn something new this evening. So the, the east-facing EMD is really only concerned to me. I just want to advocate for the tenants in my building and just understand that there's some parameters put in place for, you know, noise and light pollution and just, just want to make sure that that's in a cohesive, you know, environment that's inviting for, for those that are going to be renting my space. I just, I'm already battling a lot of vacancy and just a lot of disruption with the construction and, you know, I, I support the project and I think it's, it's, it's great for our community. I'm typically the one that's in, in their seats, so I'm a developer as well in, in this community for, for a, for another company. So, so I definitely understand that the seat that they sit in, but I just, I just want to be an advocate for, for my space and make sure that I, I can be successful and that my tenants in that space can also be successful. So, so the main concerns is, you know, is, is that sign going to be shut off in the evenings? Is there, is there a time that it gets shut off at? Just want to, just want to make sure we think about that. Also, just understanding the brightness and, you know, just the other things that it brings to the area. So I understand that, you know, it's, it's a blank wall on a, on a parking structure, but just, I'd like to better understand what that visually is going to look like and make sure that it has some type of architectural inviting component to it.
I already asked Pete's at 11 o'clock PM. It's going to be off.
11 PM? Okay.
And it's going to turn back into looking like the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And the board can always bring the applicant back up to answer to any questions that are now being raised. I'll go ahead and check the call-in comments. And the line is open. I don't see any call-in comments for this request tonight.
Thank you. For further discussion. Can I have a finding of fact?
Yes, you may, one moment.
Thank you.
I move that the finding of facts for 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated September 24th, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Nineteen notices of public hearing were sent and zero responses were received. The applicant Kendra Daniel, representing Tower Pinkster, spoke on behalf of the project. A dimensional variance is being requested for two parcels, if you will, the event center and the, excuse me, the parking deck and the event center. So we're going to talk, or I'm going to report first on what was discussed regarding the parking deck. The arena with the parking deck is going to be a multi-use facility with an ice rink, WMU, hockey, basketball courts, events, trade centers, show. The parking deck is integrated into all glass. It's going to be an eight-story deck with a wraparound on it. And what they're looking to do is have full motion video without sound. The main entry content is unknown at this time. The box office is going to have a digital marquee also around the corner, static imagery only, Spirit Horse logo, WMU greeting people as they come from West Main headed downtown Kalamazoo. The staff comments. It's an eight-story parking deck, as mentioned earlier, and then a four-story event structure. There are no freestanding signs. All of the signs are going to be on the building. The signs that are exempt are, might be any signs that possibly come up that the public can't see that are behind or in between the structure and the parking structure and the event center. The marquee sign does fall within the current zoning guidelines. There's electronic messaging. Um, there's electronic messaging display facing North Park Street. They're looking for 1,921 square feet to display where the, um, current zoning is, uh, 492 square feet. Many deposits of this are, "It's going to be a useful tool for community events, projecting things into the plaza." Um, it's pretty cool that it's all going to be on the building. Remy said that it's, it shuts off at 11. When the sign is not in use, you can see the building, the architecture of it. So it's not like it's just this blank screen when it's not projecting. Um, let's see. Comments about, um, the EMD exceeding 200 square feet for a wall sign, allowance for a changeable copy 100%, full motion video. Um, an example was that, that Wing Stadium has a 1,029-foot, um, sign outside its building. We have a Mr. Matt Conley from, uh, 137 North Park Street who spoke in opposition. He's, he has a two and a half story commercial building that's a law hall, law office and apartment. And while he's, you know, positive about the project, he also would like some assurances, um, regarding the light pollution and the noise pollution, um, as regard to the, um, safety and well-being of, um, his tenants. And that concludes my finding of fact.
Excellent.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, me too. In favor.
Aye.
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 Any discussion? Well, I just want to make sure that EMD, everyone knows that EMD is, um, electronic message display and it is not an earnest money deposit. Okay. So can I get a motion? And a second regarding the pending request.
I move for a motion for the pending request.
I second.
This, I'm sorry, um.
Yeah, we should, we should take these one at a time.
This is going to be one at a time. So it would be number one.
I put in a motion for the moving of facts or, uh, not the moving of facts, but for the approval of one.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you. Pete, would you like to take a roll call?
Yeah, yeah. And just, and for the record, this is the dimensional variance related to the parking deck, um, to allow the total square footage of the wall sign to exceed the maximum allowance of signage for an individual wall or elevation. And we'll start with Sylvester?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Okay, that one is passed. Let's move on to number two. Can I get a motion and a second regarding the pending request?
I make a motion, I make a motion for the second for pending request.
I second the second motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
And this will be a dimensional variance to allow, on the parking deck, to allow the wall sign, uh, to allow a wall sign that exceeds the maximum size allowed for a wall sign of 200 square feet. And for this, we will start with Han?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second regarding number three?
I, I make a motion for regarding number three?
I second.
Can I get a roll call?
And this dimensional variance is to allow an, an EMD wall sign that exceeds the maximum allowance of 25% of the wall sign area, uh, since this will be 100%. And we'll start with Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
And that one was approved. Can I get a motion and a second for number four?
I move approval of the dimensional variance identified as number four.
I second that motion for number four.
Can I get a roll call?
This dimensional variance is to allow for full motion and video on the EMD located on the east side of the parking deck. And this does not include what staff was talking about for a condition, but.
This would require an amendment to?
It will require an amendment. Otherwise, I will proceed as instructed to.
Could I have the benefit of, of being reminded of what those conditions, suggested conditions were?
The, the staff suggested condition, uh, conditioned that the guidelines be adopted for, as, excuse me, the, the guidelines proposed by the development team be adopted as a condition of use for the EMDs.
I amend my motion to include the conditions as stated by staff.
I second that amendment, motion.
What is that gonna be written into?
That will be written into the decision letter that gets mailed out.
I was asking. Okay.
Okay. Since there's been an amendment to the motion, you'll first vote on the amendment. And then if that's approved, the amendment is approved, then you'll vote on the
Change.
Motion as amended.
Okay.
Can I get a roll call for the amendment?
We'll start with McReynolds?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Can I get a, a roll call for the motion?
And this is a dimensional variance regarding the allowance for full motion video on the EMD, uh, located on the parking deck with the guidelines proposed by, within the packet as a condition of use for the EMD. And for this, we'll start with Han?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
And that's approved.
Is that all of them?
I believe that's all of them.
All right.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
That's, that's the parking deck section. We have three more.
Yes.
We're still here.
Father. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
So this is.
We're halfway.
Okay. All right.
So we're at, so, so the, there are three remaining dimensional variances for the
Event Center.
For the event center building.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second for number one, for the event center?
I make a motion for the event center one?
I support that.
Can I get a roll call?
This will be for the event center and a dimensional variance related to the, to allow the total square footage of wall signs to exceed the maximum allowance of signage for an individual wall. And we will start with, where should we start now? We're gonna start with Vandenhomburg on this one.
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second for number two of the event center?
I, I move for the making a motion for number two for the event center?
I support that.
Can I read the wrong one? Can I get a roll call, Pete?
Yes. Let me. One moment, please. This is for a dimensional variance to allow wall signs that exceed the maximum size allowed per wall signs of 200 square feet. And for this one, we'll start with Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second for number three on the event center?
I move to make a motion for number three on the event center?
I support that motion.
Can I get a roll call, Pete?
And this, uh, third and final dimensional variance for the event center sign package is related to allowing an EM, EMD wall signs that exceed the 25% maximum of the wall sign area allowance for EMDs. And we'll start with Sylvester?
Yes.
Vandenhomburg?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Again, approved. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for the detailed presentation.
Sometimes you just gotta be quiet like Cat Williams says, we can make some progress. You know, so.
Do we have anything else?
We do not have anything else on the agenda.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned.
Yay. Now I need to go get some gas and a soda.